Madam City Clerk, we have the roll call, please.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Sternquist?
Here.
Councilmember Viscara is absent. Councilmember Yu is absent. Mayor Protem Chavez?
Here.
Mayor Mann?
Here.
Motion to excuse Councilmembers Viscara and Yu for cause?
Second.
Motion in a second with no objections. Both councilmembers are excused. Next, we have the invocation. Tonight, we have the pleasure of having Pastor Kelty from Community of Christ Church located at 5851 Temple City Boulevard to provide the invocation. Please rise and please remain standing afterwards for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our heavenly Creator, who is the source of all good things, we, a few of your children, would come into your presence today to ask for your ever-present Spirit to be with this council meeting and as to open our minds to the things that make this a better city, the deed we might share together our desires and our wants, that indeed Temple City might become the city you would have us become. In doing this, we would also pray for the staff, that they may have the wisdom and their individual tasks, do them with diligence and joy, so that council and staff again might work for harmony to make this a place, Temple City, a place we're proud of. And we would also offer prayer on behalf of the audience here gathered, that through the individuals of the audience, the council, the staff, all together as one body, we share together for a better Temple City. This would be our prayer, in the Creator's name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. And tonight for the pledge, we have Boy Scout Troop 161. The scouts presenting the flags are Ivan Zhao, Aaron Wang, and Andy Yan.
Call guard, attention. Call guard, front and center. Call guard, four march. Hold. Please post the color. All those in uniform and/or veteran, please salute. All those not in uniform, please raise your hand over your heart. Please, I mean the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call guard, reform. Call guard, retreat. Hold. Call guard dismissed. The audience may now be seated.
Thank you, Boy Scout Troop 161. Thank you very much. Next, on our item is ceremonial matters. We have a very special presentation tonight from the South Coast Air Quality Management District with an update on air quality. And tonight, we have the pleasure of welcoming Governing Board Vice Chair Michael Caciotti, who is also a council member with South Pasadena, and he will be providing the update. Welcome.
Mayor, welcome. Mayor Protem, council members, staff, great to see everyone tonight, audience. Sheriff, great to see everybody. So I'm your representative. You're my boss on the South Coast AQMD, arguably the largest air pollution district in the nation. Up here, we represent 17 million people, four counties, LA, Orange, San Bernardino, Riverside. One-third of the US containerized cargo comes through here. You see all the ocean-going vessels on the photo. Unfortunately, those large diesel-polluting trucks in all the warehouses. The photo on the left, we were formed, there was at the time, four separate air pollution districts, LA, Orange, Riverside, San Bernardino. They brought them together because EPA said we've got to meet clean air standards. It's the most polluted area in the nation. So there's two sources of pollution really. Stationary on the left, things that don't move, paints, solvents, power plants, landfills, gas stations, auto body shops. On the right are all the mobile sources, which are really the biggest source of pollution, 80% in our basin. Ships, airplanes, trains, even the MetroLink trains that go by all the time. Guess how many train, MetroLink trains are in every day in our basin? I had to count. Asked my AQMD staff, no one knew. Over 220 MetroLink Amtrak trains, and they're all diesel. We've supplied them with about $70 million to upgrade to highest level, but still. Off-road equipment, cars, trucks, lawn equipments now surpass cars as a source of pollution in California. Here's why it's bad. On the left, two sources of pollution, which we don't meet the standards, and are also bad for our health. On the left, ozone, and that's, you'll start seeing that probably around May, June, July. Again, it's formed simply nitric oxide from cars, trucks, lawn equipment, mixed with VOCs, Valter, again, it compounds. The sun hits it in the hot summer, bakes it, and that's where you get smog. And it, you know, causes asthma, things like that, just a lot of bronchial problems. On the right, this is a really dangerous compound. That gray stick is your human hair. That little blue globe is particulate matter 10. And when we all walked in here tonight, walking, and we all actually kicked up dust. That's particulate matter 10. Our body can fight that off. It goes in and out quick. Go a little higher on that little red globe. That's particulate matter 2.5 from internal combustion engines and metals, copper, your brakes, et cetera. That goes into your bloodstream. Even smaller than that is our ultrafine particulates at the top. Those are even smaller. 2.5 in that go in your circulatory system throughout your entire body. You know, it goes through your heart, your lungs, and now we know it goes into your brain. Studies in first one involving humans, University of British Columbia, two months ago, they exposed 27 humans to particulate matter, did MRI before and after. Substantial cognitive negative impacts on the brain. Afterwards, within a few hours, it came back. But that was only for short-term exposure, so very serious for all of us. And here's why, because that's your human body, your kids, your family, even our animals. As it goes in, it just goes throughout your whole system, and sometimes, as the neurologists, neurosurgeons tell us, it may sit there in your organs for years. And we know it is linked to asthma, autism, and now Alzheimer's disease, because it expresses, goes through your cells, inside your cells, to the genes. If we can meet clean air standards, we would avoid in the first column, 1,500 premature deaths. We reduce hospitalizations. Third column's important, because I coach soccer against Temple City every year. Last few years, they've beaten me. I used to beat them all the time, but they're very good now. This is the first year I've had, in 30 years of coaching soccer, I've had every couple of years, one kid with asthma. Mayor Protem this year had three kids with asthma, with a nebulizer at every practice. I know Tom because I see him at Little League all the time. And it's just sad that more and more kids have asthma, and it's, a lot of this caused something by pollution. Other causes, of course, but it's really serious. We can also reduce healthcare costs by the billions. Good news on the left is ozone's been going down a little bit over the last 20 or so years, 30 years, but it's kind of leveled off. We need to go lower. On the right, these cancer-causing air toxics, there's many things in the air. Were really bad in 2012, but because of new technologies, getting a lot better, the bottom. Again, we've got to fight these things. Even the airplanes there, the trains, the off-road construction equipment, everything that's internal combustion engines, causes this pollution. Just quickly, there's three agencies that regulate air quality. On the left is US EPA. They're the ones that really should be doing this with these mobile sources. And we may be taking them to task pretty soon. Carb should do some of that. We just regulate basically stationary sources, auto repair, smog stations, things like that, landfills, oil refineries. If we don't meet these standards, at the very bottom, this is 2023, 2031, if we don't meet clean air standards in our basin, on the left in green, federal government can say, okay, gas stations, oil refineries, we're going to double your permit fee. In the middle, we're going to take away a billion dollars in transportation funding. And the worst thing, they've almost done it before, we can say on Mondays, only even cars can be on the street, on your license plate. On Tuesdays, odd number. So we've got to get, meet these standards. Good news, we've got a lot of money for your residents, Mr. Mayor, council members, staff. On the left, first column, if you want to get rid of your natural gas water heater, $1,500 for a clean air furnace rebate program. We'll just give it to you, no matter how much money you make. If you cut your own grass, you got a gas-powered lawnmower, turn it in, no questions asked, we'll give you up to $250, self-propelled, state-of-the-art, all-electric mower, no cords. Third column, you want to get an electric car, we'll give you $250 for an electric charger. If you make under a certain amount, we'll give you $500. I just got one from ChargePoint for 800 bucks. Fourth column, if you want to turn in a gas car, it could be a gas guzzler, it could be an old car, whatever it is, we'll give you up to $9,500. Get a cleaner gas car, get a plug-in hybrid, a hybrid, all-electric car, hydrogen fuel cell, get an electric bike. We just had two people get electric bikes the last couple of months. Or a Transit Pass forever, almost. So there's a lot of funding available. And at the bottom, that little square says, "New program in development. We're looking at how to help residents who want to transition some of their appliances, stoves, water heating, things like that, away from gas to electric."
Michael?
Yeah?
With the $9,500 for a clean air vehicle?
Mm-hmm.
Is that in addition to the incentives that the government is currently giving?
Yes.
Wow.
It depends on your, it depends on your income level, and you have to go on our website, it'll tell you. You know, I haven't got it memorized, but again, as you make more money, it goes down.
Okay.
But if you're kind of middle, it depends on what money you're making, you can get up to $9,500 off. And some people just turned in like a $1,999 and got like a 2015 or '16 gas car, because it's a lot cleaner. You know, when I used to prosecute during the day, I was telling the sheriff at the Attorney General, my job was prosecuting people with professional licenses in the state. One of them was auto repair smog check stations and auto repair places. So the technology on cars right now, the computer systems of cleaning up is, and that's why actually now, as I mentioned before, lawn equipment now has surpassed cars, because cars are getting so clean. I mean, demonstrate a leaf blower in a second. If you ran a gas-powered leaf blower for an hour, it's like driving a gas car from here to Denver. So it's, cars have gotten so much better, council member. Now for your cities, there's a lot of money available too for businesses in the city. There's a program right now for mom-and-pop gardeners from the state, 70% off if they want to turn in their leaf blowers, or weed whackers, whatever they want to do. We've got a program at AQMD, just came out last week. You, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, you can have your city, I'm not sure if you have, Cynthia, you were out there maybe many years ago. I don't know if you have a contractor or the city staff that does it, Brian. I forget who it is. Contractor? Okay. So we did it, and now they're, you know, our guys do it. You can get up to 85% off, but they got to turn in old gas equipment. So there's all these programs, that little shuttle right there, South Pasco, that's a state program. We administer $70,000 off. So that state program, in a moment, it's still open for a couple of months, so as you're going through your budget, public works vehicles, do you have any, large vehicles, shuttles, things like that, there's a lot of money available to transition from diesel, compressed natural gas, hydrogen fuel cell, battery. And we just got, we just got a new one a few months ago, and the drivers say it's twice as good as one that I got five years ago. So technology's advancing really fast. Trucks, there's a lot, if you have any companies in here that have trucks, I know a lot of families, you know, live in these beautiful communities, own trucking companies. Again, I almost got a gentleman in Hacienda Heights, he was so close, $200,000 off a truck. He just dropped out at the last minute. A lot of money available to transition from diesel. Show, can you demonstrate really quick, Mr. Mayor, with your indulgent, really fast? If I were to turn on a gas-powered leaf blower in here, we'd have to empty the place in two seconds, because the pollution is so bad. But I'll demonstrate this, and the technology is equal to a gas. Watch your papers, hold on everything.
Hold on to it.
Show, go ahead.
Okay.
Don't hit Peggy. So, over here.
Wow. It was like yesterday.
So this, I was out in your park earlier, blowing all this stuff off the sidewalk, so it's very good.
Is that a, is that a commercial unit, or is that a home? Could you, do people at homes have those as well?
Mayor Protem, you're right. This is a commercial, this is a handheld leaf blower. That battery will probably last, and the batteries are interchangeable, 35 to 50 minutes, depending if they use it judiciously. And we have Dan from Ags who teaches our gardeners to maintain our properties. How, he's like, yeah, we're going to do a demonstration actually Thursday at Garfield Park from 9:00 to 1:00 o'clock with all the-
Because I have one of those, but it's a lot smaller. But it's, it's electric, and so it's, it's great. I love it.
What model, do you know? Is it Makita, Still? That's a Still. Just Makita, Still? Husqvarna, Ego?
Toro, or, I don't know. It's one of the ones. I got it at Home Depot. It was cheap, and it was, it works great.
So if you're a gardener, you can get 85% off. So something, so even the riding lawnmower, the 60-inch, which cost, sorry, it cost $20,000, you would pay about $4,000 plus tax. So it's incredible. We had the program four years ago, LA Unified scooped up all the money at the end. They converted most of their schools. But you're right, so that one, there's also a backpack blower, the battery lasts, we timed them at the AQMD headquarters, could probably do it at the public works. We do the whole hardscape in about an hour, hour and a half, and the battery still go for another half hour. And what you do is just have two or three batteries, interchange them.
Yeah, the one I have has a battery put in it, and then there's one charging.
Yes.
So you can just, don't have to worry about ever going out.
Mayor Protem, my gardener, he's charging while he's doing my lawn, interchanges, goes across the street, does the same thing.
There you go.
Let's go here. So this is, all of your residents pay a fee on your car registration of $4. 40% of that goes to you. 40% goes to the middle one, Mobile Source Air Pollution Reduction Committee, which gives out grants every year of $15 million. You got one, that's great. Most of my cities didn't get one. That's super. And the other 30% goes AQMD. You've used a lot of money at the top, $1.4 million, did many things in your city. And if you notice in the top rectangle, it says, "Funding available, Carl Moyer, deadline 5/9/23." That's $51 million to cities, residents, businesses, electric trucks, electric cars, infrastructure, charging stations, hydrogen fuel cell. But it's just got to be used to reduce mobile source pollution, that's all. You can use it for that. At the very bottom, that's the money you get, the 40% of every $4 of every car registered in your city, every single year. The money keeps adding up. It's in one of your accounts, like in our city. So again, it's got to be used to reduce mobile source pollution. You've used it, it says, "Lease of city vehicle fleets, EV charging installation," whatever you think of, you can use it, use that money. You can, for electric lawnmowers. We're taking some of our money, I was telling the sheriff a little while ago, transition our entire police fleet to electric vehicles. We've now purchased our entire fleet, we're going to lease them. 2010 Tesla Model Y's the number-one selling car in California, and 10 Model 3's the number-two selling car in California, because it's the safest car on the market. And I was at the outfitters yesterday, last week, middle of the week, right by Tesla and SpaceX, and we're fitting the vehicles right now. Problem is, with its supply chain, we've got 60 of the components in, Mr. Mayor, only, just waiting for 40. But once it's there, you're welcome to come test, and we'll demonstrate for you. On the left, small business, if you've got a small business that needs any help, they got a permit from us, we're welcome. I've got Rainbow, Ben, Show will be there, I'll be out there to help you. Keep them in business, let them know what they're doing, right or wrong. The bottom complaint hotline, if you've got some of your residents, they have, there's a bad odor. Example, I was in San Fernando, was it you, Ben, or who was Ben? I forget who it was. Bill, Bill Kelly, several weeks ago, and one of the council members goes, "Hey, Mayor, Councilmember Caciotti, there's an all-American asphalt, it's in our city, but the people, the parks are smelling odors. At the schools, there's dust all over the place. We want something done." We sent our staff out that next day, they were closed. They must have seen us out there. We went out the next day, they're watering everything down. We checked, they hadn't been keeping records like they're supposed to be, of when they do their watering and everything. So we said, we issued a notice of violation, said, "You've got to keep this, because you're impacting the community." We went to the school, the parks, the neighborhoods, hand out flyers, say, "If you smell something, call this number, we'll be out there within a couple of hours and help you out." We want to keep this business in business, but you can't hurt the community. Second column, there's a free mobile app. You can check your air quality every day. As I go to my cities, I took the bus down to Main Street and cut over on Las Tunas to get here, and let me check here on the app. I'll tell you, you're, you can even go on AQMD app in Temple City. Wow, you're under 40, you've got an air quality of 37. 1 to 50 is incredible. Under 40 is almost unheard of. It's because of the wind and rain do this. But when the summer comes, we're going to be over 50, over 100, which isn't good for people with respiratory issues. But you've got incredible air quality today. What's interesting is, I go to different cities, sometimes we're better than Malibu, sometimes we're not, but it's very interesting to watch.
Is the air, is the wind's a double-edged sword sometimes, because it does clear out it, but it also brings a lot of stuff up into the air? I mean, I don't, I don't know that, I mean, the winds that we've had the last day or so can't be that good for us.
Good point. And that's the thing, when you have the leaf blower, any leaf blower, you blow up the dust and stuff on the ground, the particulates. That's why we encourage the gardeners, just go half-speed. You don't have to go 100%, because it'll blow a little higher. But even when you, Tom, even when you do a broom, that's why I paid for Catholic High School, I cut the church in a rectory. Every time you sweep, you, if, watch, if you're in the sun, in the silhouette, you just look at everything coming up. So whatever you're doing, it's going to blow, blow stuff up.
Have the recent rains had an impact on the air quality at all?
Big, big improvement. Big improvement.
Yeah. But we're tired of the rain, so it's like-
You're right.
Does AQMD have instrumentation all over the area that monitors air quality, or is that done by a different agency?
William, great question. You anticipated the next slide. The third column, we have 39 permanent multi-pollute monitors and several single. So we have staff that goes out, because I'm trying to, the only car we can't get that's electric is a van. They don't have the range, because we, we go from high part of Riverside all the way to Santa Clarita and up. And our air basin is massive. It's kind of the metro parts of the four counties. So they check everything from particulate matter, ozone. We're also contracted, I just can't give you all the information, with certain national agencies, in case there's an attack on the United States. We know what you're breathing every single day in our, in our basin. So to protect your health from regular things, and also whether there's an attack or something like that.
Also, these aren't stationary?
They're stationary.
Oh, they are stationary.
And we do have mobile ones, too.
Got it, okay.
And the last one is the, people can go out now at stores and buy air quality sensors, a lot of people do, to test in their neighborhoods and things like that. We have what we call it our base, if you ever want, if you guys ever get one, or you know people that do, take it to our agency up in Diamond Bar. We've got an air quality sensor performance evaluation center. When we test, air quality sensors, tell if they're any good. The quality's good or the quality's bad, because there's a lot in the market, and a lot of companies want to make a lot of money. And finally, if, whatever you need, since you're my boss, I will be here. You've got Showte, you've got, I've got all the retired mayors. You've got Ben Wong from West Covina, and Rainbow's our staff member that does all the hard work. But thank you so much, and happy to ask her any more questions, if you have it, Mayor.
Any more questions?
I have a quick question. So tonight, we're actually amending our rules on artificial turf. Does, does the AQMD have any programs for assistance or installation of that, as it relates to the environment or anything?
We don't. And I'm not sure if the Metropolitan Water District does. I don't know if they do or not.
No, I just, I think they do.
They do.
And also, you mentioned e-bikes, which is with help. What, do you know anything about the regulations? I always wondered about e-bikes. Are they, are they bikes, or are they vehicles? And what is it, where do you, I know people have them, but can you ride in like, let's say, a vehicle lane, or do you have to stay over the sign? I mean, I don't know. I mean-
I don't want to put the sheriff on the spot.
Oh, yeah, I don't want to put him on the spot either. But I, I, I have a friend of mine that has one, but he doesn't really use it that much. And I know that when he does, though, he almost treats it like, like a regular bike. It's, it's not like he's out in the middle of the road or anything like that, you know?
What we could do is, like we have, one of our consultants is Wes Rudeman from Active SGV, because I've seen him, like you say, somewhere on the side in the bike lanes, and some just, one, today I was in the street on Fair Oaks, just right, right in front of me. I ride a bike a lot, a regular without assist.
Well, you used to be a big bike rider, but not e-bike. You had to, you pedaled.
Regular. And I still, I still do, but I understand, the sheriff can confirm or not. Once I'm in a lane, I have the same rights as a vehicle, as a car.
Right, right, of course, yeah. Interesting. Thank you.
Councilmember Sternquist, any more questions?
No, I just want to congratulate you on your passion that continues to, you know, make sure we have clean air. You've been doing this for a long time, Michael, and you're still as passionate today as you were when we first met.
Oh, thanks.
And by the way, I've been to South Pasadena Little League for the last two years for their tournaments. They do a great job over there, by the way.
Thanks. Thanks for coming out.
You guys do a great job there.
And I've been to your park, what's your park right off Dane's Road with that park at Temple City?
Live Oak.
What a beautiful park. I wish your kids weren't so good in soccer. They beat me this past Sunday, by the way. Under 16 boys, 2-0, so just giving up.
Well, thank you so much, Mike, for coming by and sharing. We always enjoy your presentations.
Thanks, Mayor William. Pleasure. Thank you.
Thanks, Show.
See you, Show. Rainbow.
All right. So, so next, we move on to public comments on items not listed on the agenda. Do we have any members of the public who would like to address the council? All right. Seeing none, we will close public comments and move on to the consent calendar. All items can be approved in a single motion unless any council members want to pull any items.
Motion to approve the consent calendar?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Can we get the roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Mann?
Yes. The consent calendar has been approved. We now move on to item 8A. The first item on our public hearing, which is the introduction and first reading of ordinance number 23-1072, amending Title VIII and sections 9-1N-10 of the Temple City Municipal Code to comply with the municipal separate storm sewer system permit. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor Mann, and members of the council. Staff respectfully asks for this item to be continued to our next meeting, although this item has been published. We would ask you to at least take comment related to the, open the public hearing and continue it to April 18th. Thank you.
Any council questions? All right, then we will open the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to, actually, we do have a, we do have a common card from Mr. Steve Stafford on 8A?
Mayor Mann, Mayor Protem, Chavez, councilmember Sternquist, and city staff. I'd like to know, it talks about waterways. What do we consider, do we consider a waterway? We got, in this city, several alleys that are cut off that would be considered waterways. That's they were designed for, for the water to flow from one area to another. And who's going to be responsible for those waterways? You know, they're on people's property. And when my dad bought his house where I'm living now, that was, that was maintained by the flood control district. Suddenly, it went away. So the question is, who's responsible? Nobody seems to know. I brought this up before about these alleys, and who's responsible, and nobody knows. I think before you pass this, we need to look at, who's responsible for these waterways? What are we going to do with them? How, how's, are these waterways going to take care of our runoff? And who's responsible if, if something gets into those waterways? That question has never been clarified. Flood control went away from them back in, I believe, 1970 or '69. '69 or '70, they went away from them. From that point forward, nobody knows who's responsible for them. We're bringing up water quality. That's, there's a lot of things here. Another thing is, whenever there's an accident in this city, about 50% of the time, the tow company, they just don't clean up their mess. That gets into our water system. Okay? That needs to be dealt with, because they leave chemicals in the street, they leave glass, it all goes down the gutter into the storm drain. That's part of our waterways, and that needs to be looked at before this is passed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stafford. And if you join us for the next public hearing, we will have answers to your questions. Is there anyone else who would like to comment on 8A? All right. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Any final questions or comments or a council motion?
I'll make a motion, and we continue this matter to April 18th, 2023.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Mann?
Yes. So that will be continued to our next meeting in April. We'll move on to item 8B, which is the introduction and first reading of ordinance number 23-1070, amending the city's rules related to artificial turf, landscaping, and hardscape. Mr. Cook? So we'll have a community development director, Remus. All right, so we'll have a community development director, Remus.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and council members. Um, before you tonight is an ordinance that not only addresses artificial turf, but also will address some landscaping and hardscaping issues in the city. The, the impetus or of this, um, code amendment was really the severe drought that the state had been through for the last three years. In recognition of that, the planning commission asked us to look at the codes that we had in place to ensure that they allowed for sufficient water conservation in the community. So starting back in June of last year, they asked us to study the issue, and we came back in July and had a presentation with them about the existing rules that we had. We walked them through some examples of, um, of front yards in the neighborhood and then specifically focusing on artificial turf. We talked about the pros and cons of artificial turf, and at the end of the conversation, they asked us to come back with some additional analysis. So in October, we came back with some additional analysis and a recommendation. And then, um, they asked us to prepare an actual ordinance. So on February twenty-eighth, we presented that ordinance to them, and they recommended that we bring this ordinance to you tonight. So I'd like to divide tonight's, uh, presentation into three general sections. The first is, um, just walking you through some examples, um, of artificial turf that we presented to the planning commission, and they can kind of show you the basis for some of the decisions that, um, this, uh, the planning commission made in regards to this, um, ordinance. Uh, secondly, I wanna show you some different scenarios or models that we used to look at the figures and the numbers that we came up with. And then lastly, talk to you about some of the additional standards that are, that are in the ordinance. So, um, as we presented these different slides to the planning commission, some general themes came out that they liked about the, some of these examples. Uh, the first was that they liked that there was, um, uh, there was typically in the good examples, um, there was a mixture of both, um, artificial turf and live vegetation. It wasn't all just artificial turf. Um, they liked that the artificial turf was often placed, uh, away from the structures, away from the, um, property lines, both the front property line and the side property lines. And in some cases, it, they were also kind of buffered or setback from driveways and from walkways. And then as we showed some additional examples, um, you can also see that the quality of artificial turf sometimes stands out. Sometimes it looks a bit more one-dimensional, or I should say, two-dimensional. Um, sometimes it doesn't look as realistic and other occasions, um, they, uh, sometimes it looks almost like a carpet. For instance, in this example, it, it starts to look like it, there's only one color. Um, there's no what's called a thatch layer to it. Um, and those were some examples that they wanted us to really look at, not just, um, how much artificial turf, but how to ensure that it was a quality product. So in this example, for instance, there was very little live vegetation. And they wanted to make sure that there was sufficient live vegetation in the front yard. So based on some of those examples, we worked on creating some models or scenarios to start determine what was the right percentage of the front yard, um, in terms of hardscape, artificial turf and live vegetation. And so the first, these next two slides, this slide and the next slide, um, are, they're geared at showing you what the existing zoning code allows. So in the existing zoning code, there is a maximum of thirty percent artificial turf. There's a minimum of the front yard that has to be live vegetation, and that's seventy percent. And there is a maximum amount of hardscape, which is ten percent of the front yard. So we strove to show some examples, um, of a typical lot. This would be one where the driveway would, would lead to a garage in the back. And the house is up front, and then there's a sidewalk out front. So in this example, um, in making sure that the live vegetation minimums were met, the maximum amount of artificial turf we could get to was nineteen percent. So even though the code allowed for maximum of thirty, in this case, the maximum we could get to was nineteen. And this next, yeah.
Scott, in the, sorry to interrupt, the previous example, the driveway is included or not included in the calculation?
Yeah, so this is a difference between the existing code and the proposed code. In the existing code, we removed the driveway from the calculations. And, uh, so then on top of that, there was a hardscape maximum of ten percent. And in the new code, we include the driveway within the percentages, just to make the calculations a lot easier. In this example, this is one of those houses where you'd have a driveway that enters off the street, uh, but then you would turn into the, um, into the garage where the garage is up front. Um, so in that case, you have a lot more room in the front yard. Um, that artificial turf, again, the maximum we could get up to was twenty-two percent in trying to prove this out. So, and, and the live vegetation is at the minimum of seventy percent.
Now, when you say live vegetation, that's different from like in some of the photos we saw where there were rocks with vegetation in it.
Right.
So the rocks don't count.
Right, if, if you had like a dry stream bed in the front yard, that would be counted towards your hardscape maximum.
But I don't see hardscape on any of these percentages.
Right, the hardscape, the maximum is set at ten percent under the code.
On, on everything?
Yes.
Okay.
So, um, the next step in the process for the commission was to show them, we showed them nine different, um, scenarios. And they supported scenario seven, eight and nine. Um, in scenario seven, eight and nine, what we did is we showed that the artificial turf would be buffered um, from the house, from the side property lines, the front property lines and the driveway with, by three feet. So there'd be a three-foot distance between each of those objects. And so in this example, similar to the one you saw before, um, we, we set the artificial turf three feet from each of those items. And then the, in that case, the maximum amount of artificial turf in that diagram is thirty-nine percent. And then the walkway is eight percent and the live vegetation is thirty percent. And so these were, these were numbers that they were comfortable with. Um, similarly, with a house with a different setup, this would be a house where your driveway or your, your garage is parallel to the street, and you'd have a, a wide garage door, a two-door, um, garage door. In this case, your artificial turf is at twenty-three percent of the front yard. Your, um, hardscape is about forty-five percent, so that's the driveway plus the walkway, and your live vegetation's at about thirty-two percent. And then the last scenario, using these same kind of setbacks, is a very wide but shallow lot. So in this case, the lot's ninety feet wide. You still have that two-car garage in the front that you pull into. In that case, your artificial turf is around, uh, twenty-nine percent. Um, your driveway plus your walkway is at about, um, thirty-six percent, and your live vegetation's around thirty-five percent. So we walked them through these different scenarios and showed them this table with all of these numbers. And, um, they felt comfortable with setting the maximum hardscape at about forty-five percent. The live vegetation at minimum, uh, twenty-two percent, and the artificial turf, um, maximum at forty-three percent. Um, so on, on top of these maximums and minimums, there would also be these setback standards that the commission requested.
Do you have a, do you have a map similar to what you were showing before with these numbers?
I'm sorry, like a, like a diagram?
Yeah.
The, the trouble is, is because the numbers vary, um, you could do a lot of different scenarios.
So these are the maximum numbers?
Yes, yeah. So for instance, in, in this diagram here, you would be maxing out your artificial turf or your, you'd be hitting your live vegetation at thirty-five percent, your artificial turf at twenty-nine percent. But there would be flexibility within that if you wanted to reduce the artificial turf and add more vegetation, things like that.
And then of what this is doing is forcing anybody to put artificial turf in, correct?
That's correct. It's not a requirement to have it.
This is just, they wanna do it, these are the things that we would like you to look at when you're, are following.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So they need to get a permit to put in artificial turf?
Um, there would be a zoning clearance requirement. It's a forty-seven dollar permit that they can do over the counter.
And this is only as far as the front yard is concerned?
Yes, sir.
No regulations for the rear?
That's correct. We're, we're proposing to remove the rear yard requirements.
Scott, was there any discussion with the planning commission? Like, why do we, are we trying to regulate people who are trying to be responsible in putting in drought tolerant turf? I mean, personally, I, I mean, when we went the route of encouraging people to put in drought tolerant gardens, we had an array from ugly to really beautiful, and that still exists. But I recently seen some of the not-so-attractive, um, drought tolerant yards being converted to having artificial turf. And does it look like a, a, you know, if you're driving by a, a rectangular carpet of, you know, instead of a grass? Maybe, but it's a lot better looking than what was the disaster of a drought tolerant garden. So I just not, I, I don't know. Was, what, was everybody in the planning commission all on board for regulating turf?
Uh, yes, so we, we had a long conversation with the planning commission, both about whether artificial turf was a good or a bad thing. And I can walk you through some of the points on that. Um, but there were some on the commission that wanted to allow more artificial turf, and there were some that didn't like artificial turf and wanted it really to be minimized. Um, and so that's why we walked through some of those photographs with them. And there were positions, um, where, you know, where the artificial turf covered the entire front yard. And they said clearly, we don't want that. We want there to be live vegetation in our front yard. We think that better fits the context of Temple City, um, from an aesthetic perspective. Um, but beyond that, um, for instance, the Upper Sanguebo Valley Municipal Water District recently held two, um, studies, uh, study sessions or seminars with, uh, community members. And they came out very emphatically against the use of artificial turf. Um, artificial turf adds.
They came out, uh, the, the Met, the water district came out against?
Yes, the, the speakers, um, for the, that were hired by the district were not in favor of artificial turf. Um, artificial turf, um, adds to the urban heat island effect, which increases, um, the heat within a local community. Um, it ruins soil ecology, so within the soil, there is a lot of, um, living, breathing objects that add to the ecology. For instance, there's worms. Those worms then help feed the birds. Um, and when you see whole neighborhoods transition to something away like to artificial turf, um, it affects the urban ecology. Um, it also reduces permeability of the soil. Um, and then often, once the artificial turf is removed, it, um, you have to re-enliven the soil again. It basically becomes dead, and it has to be recreated. In addition to that, um, our, artificial turf, um, I'm sorry, it, it could go, there's, there's a number of reasons, um, that ecologically speaking.
I think that's enough of good reasons, but I think a lot of people don't even realize that. That they just think they're being diligent in having something that is drought tolerant, doesn't require a lot of water.
It, it's true. It does solve one piece of the sustainability puzzle. But, um, there are many environmental activists who argue that it then creates other problems in, within sustainability. For instance, um, it only lasts for ten years. So that means all of that then becomes waste that then goes into the, the landfills. Um, it uses a lot of oil to create, the oil and energy and water to create the plastics that are within the artificial turf. So from a sustainability perspective, it does check one of the boxes, but it leaves a lot of other boxes unchecked.
Thank you.
So in additional, addition to the percentage maximums and minimums that I talked about and, um, those kind of setback location standards, the commission also asked us to look into what other cities do to ensure that the, that the artificial turf that is installed is of a higher quality. Um, and so we looked at our surrounding cities and found that, um, there were some good standards out there that we could rely on. Um, so we're proposing within the ordinance some material standards. These would include an eight-year anti-fade warranty, and that's pretty standard for any of the, the, the middle of the range to high-quality, um, turf products. Uh, pile height or the height of the grass itself has to be at least two-thirds of an inch. Um, there has to be at least two green colors within the grass to make it look real. Um, there needs to be a yellow thatch layer, again, to make it look more realistic. Uh, the backing needs to allow for permeability so that some of the water does go down into the soil. There needs to be a fill material that keeps the blade standing upright. So after they install the grass, they then, um, put a fill material that's in the grass that helps the blade stand up. Um, but there is a requirement that rubber crumb should not be allowed, because sometimes that rubber crumb is recycled and includes lead. There's.
Are those those little black beads that they use that you see on the fields for the sporting events?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Um, indoor, and notice that indoor and outdoor carpeting is not artificial turf, that's carpet. Um, and that, um, there would be no any other, no other types of artificial plants allowed. In terms of installation, they wanted to make sure that it was installed right. Um, so we, um, the ordinance includes the following installation standards. You need to remove all the existing plants that are there and compact any aggregate base. Um, you need to make sure that there's no excessive pooling. Um, that, um, if there, if it does drain, it should drain into live plants, so that would help with some of the stormwater issues. It should be permanently anchored and sewn together. Um, all the grass should point in the same direction. Um, the existing irrigation should be removed or at the very least capped. Uh, there should be bender board, um, between the grass and the planting area to prevent mixing. And they need to make sure that they're protecting the existing trees and roots from damage during installation. In terms of maintenance, just a general note that it should be maintained in an attractive, clean way. Um, if it can't be repaired, then it should be replaced, and vehicles, um, should not be parked on the artificial turf as well. And then in terms of location standards, um, the artificial turf should be installed, should not be installed within five feet of a tree. So that's to preserve, um, some of the larger tree roots. And artificial turf should not be put into the public, uh, right-of-way. Uh, and then these are the locations.
Go back to that one, the one before, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, thanks.
And then in terms of those, those location standards, um, the commission, um, wanted to make sure that artificial turf was prohibited three feet from walls of structures, three feet from the side and the front property line. But if there's no sidewalk along the front property line, then it could come all the way up to the front property line. And then they asked us to really look at what to do in terms of the corner side yard. So I have a slide here that shows, um, uh, an intersection of two streets. On the right-hand side is a house with a black grayish roof, and that side yard is completely surrounded with a fence. Um, in that case, that is a non-visible corner side yard, and they wouldn't have to set the artificial turf back from the property line or from the house.
So that would be akin to the backyard?
Exactly, exactly. Um, on the other side of the street, you have a house that doesn't have any fencing, the corner side yard's completely visible. And so the thought there was to treat it more like the front yard. So the, the, the gra, the artificial turf would need to be set back from the front property line, um, in that case. Only from the front property line, not from the house.
So can you go back to that last slide? So in, I mean, what would you call that strip of grass that, that's technically within the public right-of-way? That, that wouldn't be allowed there?
Oh, I'm sorry, they are the, um, the, the strip of grass between the curb and the gutter is the, is the parkway. So in that place, we do not allow artificial turf, yeah. Because we don't want the city to be.
I think I have seen some, and I'm not sure if it's in the, it's in the Temple City or is it in the county area where people have installed artificial turf in that, in that walkway.
It could be, we just don't want the city to be responsible for changing out artificial turf in the future.
That's not their property, that belongs to the city.
Yeah.
All right.
In general, the artificial turf cannot exceed forty-three percent. That's kind of the, the crux of the, the message there. Um, the commission also asked us, in looking at what were the appropriate setbacks from the house and from the property lines, they also wanted to allow some flexibility so that if someone wanted to have a more curvilinear, um, organic kind of looking artificial turf area, that in some places it could exceed the setbacks, if in other places it, um, it had less setbacks. So, um, so what we're proposing in the ordinance is to do what's called a minor exception. It's already allowed in the code, a minor exception. Um, but this would specifically allow the director to approve changes to the, to the artificial turf requirements and will allow us to reduce those setbacks if it meets these findings. And that would be that the proposed plan would need to create a higher quality aesthetic than the code is calling for. Um, it would not create an undesirable precedent, and the average setback would be approximately three feet. So basically requiring what's in the code, the intent of the code, but allowing for some flexibility here and there.
And would that be, um, a hearing? Would that just be a, a written request that you would review the plans and? Would that just be a written request that you would review the plans and-
So with the, yeah, with the minor exception process, we send out notification to the neighboring residents, um, and then we let them know the decision, that the director will be making a decision within a, I think it's like a fourteen-day period, and they can come in and look at the plans and give us comment within that comment period, and then at the end of the period, the director makes the decision. So it kind of gives them an opportunity for comment without having to have a full-fledged hearing. Uh, some other changes we're proposing as part of the ordinance is, um, setting a maximum hardscape in the front yard at forty-five percent, um, requiring a minimum amount of live vegetation in the front yard at twenty-two percent. Um, right now in the code, we have a maximum pathway width. We're proposing to delete that, since we'll have a maximum hardscape percentage, and then removing the maximum artificial turf rule for the rear yard. So that concludes my presentation. Um, our recommendation to the council is to introduce this ordinance for first reading, uh, waive further reading of the ordinance, and schedule the second hearing of the ordinance for April eighteenth. I'm available if you have any other questions.
All right, thank you. Uh, I guess we'll go to council questions, uh, council member Sternquist.
I don't have any questions.
Mayor Potem Chavez?
No, I don't think I have any questions. Everything was pretty much answered in the report. I have some comments afterwards, but we'll save that for later.
I have a few questions. Going, so, I guess, big picture. Really what we're doing, or what's being proposed, is we, we currently have an existing regulations dealing with landscape, hardscape, as well as artificial turf. What this is doing is it's modifying it, it's, it's being more specific about setback. So this is more like design-driven, aesthetic-driven, to make sure that we're not just allowing artificial turf to be installed in any way, which manner?
Uh, yes, um, there is some aesthetics component to this, to make sure that the product that's used is installed right and looks good, but I should say that the main impetus of this was to revise the ordinance to allow for additional water conservation methods more than what the current code allowed. That was the main driving force.
Okay. In other words, it's expanding options for homeowners?
Yes, sir.
Beyond what the current allows, okay.
Does it appear ironic that we would bring this under water conservation after we've just had the, the rains and snow and everything that we-
It, it is ironic, but Commissioner Haddad would, would say, if I can, um, take his words, that water is a cyclical issue in the state, and, um, sometimes it takes time for us to get the political will to make changes. Um, and so this is, this is the right time to do it.
And, and this has been a long time in the works, hasn't it?
Yes, sir, yeah.
It's not like we just started it last week or something.
That's correct.
I'm sorry.
Sure, no problem. Well, that's, that's a good point. Uh, I had a question about how are we defining hardscapes? And specifically, I'm getting at, like, for example, if you had someone who did a driveway with permeable pavers that technically would allow infiltration or percolation of water, is that still considered hardscape by our definition?
Yes, it's still considered hardscape.
Okay. So I, I guess the reason I, I'm bringing that up is, there's kind of a few conflicting or competing principles. One, one is the aesthetic principle, which is why we're limiting hardscape, and then you mentioned earlier in your presentation, the, um, the disadvantage of some artificial turf is reducing permeability of the soil, right? I don't have a good answer to that, it is more of something that I was thinking about when, when you were presenting.
If I may, there, there is a different section of the R-one code, and actually the R-two and R-three code, that sets separate standards for permeability. And those permeability requirements have been in the code, um, prior to the 2019 code update, so they've been in the code for quite some time.
Okay, but that, the permeability requirement is associated with, like, pavers?
Uh, yeah, so if you had pavers that had space in between to allow, uh, permeability or infiltration, um, that, that area is not included, um, it would be considered permeable pavement. If it's a slab of concrete, then it's considered impermeable.
Okay, but it, but whether it's permeable or impermeable has no impact on this particular ordinance?
That's correct.
Okay, yeah, got it. And then, uh, my, my last question is, when we say the, um, okay, so the existing code is minimum seventy percent live vegetation, and then the proposed minimum is twenty-two percent live vegetation. So on, on the surface, that sounds like a dramatic change, right? But the big difference is we're looking at the total area of the front yard differently, right? The inclusion or exclusion of the driveway?
That, that's correct, and that, that's why I didn't try to draw too much attention to the numbers between existing and proposed, because it is a, it to, it's like comparing apples to, apples to oranges, as, as you're getting to, is that, um, the old code removed the driveway before any calculations were made, and so that's why the percentages look so drastically different.
Uh, but it would also be correct to say that in the proposed minimum, we also have a maximum on hardscape, so really the only way to fill out the rest of the numbers is you have to use artificial turf or something, right? So, so really, I guess what I'm trying to say is the minimum twenty-two percent doesn't look so bad when you consider the whole picture.
That's right.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, uh, with that, um, we'll go to, we'll open the public hearing. Um, are there any comments from the public on this matter? We have more people than usual, but no comments. Stupid. All right, we'll close the, uh, public hearing. Uh, final council questions or comments? Councilmember Sternquist?
Um, I just want to say, you know, thank you, I mean, it's very comprehensive, the work that staff has done to address, um, the concerns of the planning commission, and, um, if, if you and the group think this is the way to go, then, you know, I think it's, the work has been done, so, thank you, Scott.
Mayor Potem Chavez?
Thank you. Um, you know, I want to thank the planning commission, they did a lot of heavy lifting on this, it sounds like, and staff as well. And, and the report, I think, is, I, the information has been provided to, to us, or to me anyways, is, um, well-thought-out, I, I think there were some, some good compromises. I noticed that, you know, in other cities, when it went all the way from, uh, from zero to, I mean, all over the place. Uh, I like the numbers, um, you know, and I think, uh, a lot of the standards that we've implemented, um, are good, and, and will do the, do the job that they're intended to do. So I, I have no overall problem with it. I also want to say that, you know, I recently actually installed artificial turf in our backyard.
Did you get a permit? Oh, you don't get a permit for the backyard?
Didn't need one. And I think it's great. I mean, and I, I thought, you know, we did our, our homework, and, and we, I think, got a really, really, um, good company. I think the company that did our yard did Mookie Betts' yard, so, I don't know if that means anything, but anyway, but they were really good, they came, they did a great job, they did all the things that you're talking about in the standards, with the fill, with the leveling out. We had these recent rains, there was no ponding of water, I mean, it did, it just, it was like regular grass, and it looks great. And, and we have the same thing, we're the different colors, so it looks a little bit, it doesn't look like a carpet at all. You know, and, and, and our dog likes it, so I'd be happy. Now, we haven't gotten to the summertime yet, and, and, and they explained too, that, that, yeah, just as you said, there are issues with the heat, like, that's what the water district was concerned about. But, uh, there are mitigating things that you can do for that, so I, I'm all for it. I, I don't know that I would necessarily do it in the front yard, but even if I did, I agree that I would not do the whole front yard. It, it looks better, I think, um, with some of the standards that we've created, so, so I'm good with it, yeah.
All right.
Oh, by the way, my water bill is like half of what it used to be.
Well, I'll see you.
Yeah, yeah. You don't want it in the backyard?
Yep.
I don't either. Actually, while, while, um, Mayor Potem was talking, I, I thought of another question. The slide you showed with the visible side yard versus the non-visible side yard, well, what if you had a gray area where, where it was like a-
Tom, how many square meters?
Like a slightly visible fence? I mean, I, I mean, I hate to bring it up right now, but I mean, you're inevitably going to get some situations where, whether it's a chain-link fence, or some fence with enough slots or gaps in between that someone's going to claim that, oh, well, that's technically visible, as I'm walking down the, the sidewalk, I could see the artificial turf.
Yeah, that, this is the joy of interpreting codes. There's unfortunately always some sort of gray area. Um, I think we would probably rely on the code sections that already exist for the R-one code. So the R-one code, um, already has some standards for, um, what makes a fence either visually or non-visually view obscuring, because the height of our fences in the city are dependent on whether the heights are view obscuring or non-view obscuring. So we would use the same set of standards there.
Okay, good, so there, there's consistency across different parts of our code. Okay, great. Yeah, and, and I, I concur with my, my fellow council members. I, I felt the report was very comprehensive, and it was clear that there was a lot of discussion and thought and deliberation from our planning commission. Uh, I, I also want to thank them for taking the initiative to propose this, because, I mean, nor, nor, I don't know how many cities' planning commissions would, would actually go out of their way to say, hey, we want to propose a, a change in the ordinance in, in this manner, because this was a lot of, a lot of, uh, information go, going into this. So I, I want to thank them for, for that work on, uh, in that matter. And, and I think it's, it's a good change, because, um, especially, uh, like Director Reamer's, your point about expanding the options that owners have, I, I'm, I'm a big fan of allowing our residents more options that contribute to, um, you know, water conservation or, or anything that could help, um, our, our drought-stricken area. But I guess it remains to be seen whether people really want to put in artificial turf, because at least in my part of the, the neighborhood, I don't really see any at all.
You know, I think, at least from what I can see in, in so far in Temple City, a lot of residents who have installed artificial turf have done it in the backyard. Not so much in the front yards, but mostly in the back. Uh, I don't know what the reason for that is, but I think maybe because, like, maybe the fact that they use the backyard for playing, or for animals, things like that, it's just easier to take care of, perhaps, and where the front yard, you know, you're, you've got more plants out there and things like that, perhaps. I don't know.
I'm curious, Michael, what's South Pass like with the, um, artificial turf?
Some houses have it, and some don't. There's, it's been increasing a little bit in the last couple of years, but I've never done this deep dive like you've just done, which is great. I mean, that's our staff when they go back, to share the status. But, you know, it's a small percentage of houses have it, but some houses do it in the front and the back.
I see more in, um, Arcadia Show.
Yes, they're doing the study by now.
Okay.
I, I, I think it's, driving force, no doubt, the water conservation. And like I said, that's why I said it's ironic that we would bring this now after what we've just gone through. But obviously, the last few years have not been like that, and, and that was the driving force, and, and, you know, we'll probably get back to a little bit more normalcy in the next couple, three years, I would imagine, and this will make even more sense, I guess, so.
All right, uh, with that, uh, may I have a council motion for this item?
Okay.
All right, I would make a motion that we introduce ordinance number twenty-three-dash-one-zero-seven-zero for the first reading by title only, amending Title IX, Chapters One of the Municipal Code, Attachment A to the report, related to artificial turf landscaping and hardscape. That we waive further reading of ordinance number twenty-three-dash-ten-seventy, and schedule the second reading of ordinance twenty-three-ten-seventy for April eighteenth, ten-twenty-three. Lastly, that we find that this ordinance is not subject to environmental review under the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to SEQA Guideline Sections one-five-zero-six-one-B-three, because it can be seen with certainty that the ordinance has no possibility of a significant effect on the environment. Further, any project reviewed under this ordinance would be a Class One, Three, Four, or Five categorical exemption.
Second?
We have a motion in a second, uh, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Sternquist? Yes. Mayor Potem Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Mann?
Yes.
May I read the title? May I read the title?
Yes, please.
Ordinance number twenty-three-one-zero-seven-zero, an ordinance at the City Council of City of Temple City, California, amending Title IX, Chapter One of the Temple City Municipal Code, related to artificial turf landscape and hardscape standards.
Okay, thank you, Madam City Clerk, so, uh, that motion passes. We move on to unfinished business, we have none, new business, we have none. Next, we have an update from our city manager, Mr. Brian Cook.
Thank you, Mayor Mann, mayor of the council. Uh, real, really quickly, um, this weekend, uh, this Saturday, from eight-thirty till eleven-thirty AM at Live Oak Park, we'll have, we'll have two things going on. One, we'll have our annual Easter egg hunt and pancake breakfast, but at the same time, SWA architects, who are helping us design, uh, the new playgrounds at both Live Oak Park and at Temple City Park, will be there for the community, just to get some general input, not the same kind of session we did when we did, when we developed Primrose Park.
Are they going to have, uh, samples or photos?
It's more, it's more, it's just going to be just, uh, uh, input session, so, uh, from the community, what, what elements are you looking for in the new playground? Um, we've already gotten some interesting comments online from some of the posts we have so far, but it's not the workshop session that we had at Primrose Park, so there's-
And where would they be set up in the park, do you know? Is it going to be under the, uh, in the picnic area, or?
I believe so, but, um, I, I'll double-check with staff when they come, when, tomorrow.
I think it would be better to have it outside where everybody's going to be, obviously.
I believe they're going to be in a area where they're exposed.
Are we doing a pancake breakfast this year again, then?
Yes.
And that'll be inside, no, that-
That's in the, that's in the sheltered.
Is that in the pancake area also?
Nice weather.
Yeah, 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 it'll be nice.
Um, uh, so that's, uh, it'll be a fun, and fun-filled Saturday, we usually get a lot of folks out there, and that's actually why the SWA architects wanted to be out there with essentially a built-in audience there.
You know, it seems like a nice, um, opportunity for our youth commission to get involved and do some of those fun pop-up type of events that they did, where they just survey the community or pass out a little survey and say, how do you feel about, you know, what you'd like to see at the park, because they're the youth.
Whatever, just a long, that's a changed subject. What happened with the tree planting? Are we going to redo that another time?
We're going to have to, we, we need to reschedule that event as well.
Youth committee was, you had mentioned youth committee, they were going to be involved in a tree planting at Primrose.
Well, that needs to be rescheduled.
Oh, okay, all right, sorry.
And, and naturally, to that, to that point, um, wherever SWA art is going to be located with staff, like to Mayor Potem's point, if we can make it a bit more printed, visible or pronounced, or, sometimes you have, you have the city tents all over the place, and you won't know one, what one tent is for versus the other.
I will let, Adam will be back for that event, so I'll make sure to let him know.
He does a good job of that, I guess.
Uh, lastly, uh, just as a reminder to stat, to the community, um, you've been hearing some other agencies dealing with the state and their housing element, just as a reminder, we did sort of, we did get the State of California to certify our housing element, so our exposure and our issues related to, um, meeting the state requirements on the housing element have been satisfied.
Thank you, Scott.
Yes, thank you to staff, and thank you to Mr. Reimers and his leadership on that issue. That's it for me today, Mayor.
Uh, Mr. Cook, could, could you give a general update on just the storms and how that's impacted us?
Thank, I, I neglected to mention that, uh, Mayor Mann, thank you. Um, yes, we probably saw some posts, including one of ours, of some older trees coming down. Um, that had nothing to do with the health of the trees, um, it really had to do with the intensity of the storms that we had, but, um, considering, we counted the other day, there were about four old-growth trees that went down during the, probably about the last four weeks. Luckily, all of those trees fell in the exact right direction, right into the, right into the street, did not hit any cars, did not just hit, um, in one case, uplifted, uh, some sidewalk, but beyond that pub, public right-of-way damage, there was very little. Um, credit to the tree crew, and credit to our West Coast Arborists, who maintain, uh, a regular schedule of tree trimming, and our city's broken up into grids. And part of the reason why you do not see as many trees come down is the, um, is the diligent work that our tree crews have been doing with our, yes, thank you, Councilmember Sternquist, our, the diligent work that our tree crew's been doing with West Coast Arborists, so, but some of the old-growth trees are just so old, and the, the wa, the ground was so saturated with water, it, some of these trees just, they came down. Um, and hopefully, that's the last of the big trees that come down, uh, and as we get out of this storm season and into the spring and into the summer. Um, the other thing the community's probably seeing is a few more potholes here and there. Um, we did a lot of, uh, pavement work in the last, uh, three to four months, uh, working through the storms, uh, but staff is diligent- storms, but staff is diligently working. So if you do know of a pothole that we are, we're not aware of, just please call us up or, you know, go to our website and put in that service request and the team is working as diligently as they can to fill those.
You know, it's interesting how many people in our city think that we don't really do anything about potholes, but it's like, I keep telling them, if you see a pothole, let us know and we'll, we'll take care of it. But we have to know. And, you know, we don't have people driving around every street every minute for this. And, and I'm sure the ones that we do see, we take care of, but we, we need people to be more proactive and let us know, hey, there's a pothole. Because I know every time I tell Brian about a pothole, they're out there fixing it right away.
Brian, can I suggest that with, especially the two big trees that came down, that we get on top of planting the tree just so that the residency that we're being proactive and trees are valuable to us? And if we could not use the minimum standard tree, especially because they were so large, if we can get, within reason, the largest tree that we can get to replace it?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And they're not going to be ficus trees, right?
That is not on the approved tree list and nor would staff recommend those ever coming back.
Okay.
Do we have any palm trees that are on city property?
Medians on?
It seems like most of the palm trees are on private property.
We have some on Rosemead Boulevard in the medians.
And it seems like whenever we have a storm, those are really the biggest ones that, all those fronds fall down on the ground. I mean, they're not, the trees aren't falling over, but they make quite a mess and they could be dangerous if one of those things do fall on you. But I guess if they're on private, if they're on private property, there's not much that we can do in that regard, is there?
No, the, the, most of our palm trees are, I believe, almost exclusively are on Rosemead Boulevard, but we, those are, those are trimmed on a regular cycle as well, so we don't have as many problems with that. And also too, just our stormwater system and everything else flooding in the normal areas was normal in terms of, we do have the, the topography of our city in parts, the drainage and, and stormwater, which we'll talk about at our next meeting, you know, did what it was supposed to do. And I appreciate all the crews' hard work, especially with the storm drains. They made sure cycle through cycle through cycle of all these storms, that everything was cleared and especially on places along Lower Azusa and other locations where flooding can get horribly rough. Crews did a great job of just doing the hard, backbreaking work of making sure everything was cleared and it was, it doesn't happen by accident. So I appreciate all their work.
Brian, also, one last thing. I don't know if Greg maybe had it on his radar, but if we could possibly briefly get some information in the next few days regarding the supervisors, you know, Lindsay Horvath and, let's see, the other one, Hilda Salis on that issue. I know we all got a copy of that email from Michael Rosenberg, I believe is his last name. But I've received two further emails, and I don't know if you received them also, in regards to what is the city doing. So I'd like us to be proactive and at least get some sense of what the council feels they want to do in regards to that. And maybe Greg, you can share with the public what that is regarding?
Well, it's a fairly wide-ranging motion by the supervisors to make some, again, wide-ranging changes to the manner in which the, they would direct sort of operations of the jails within the county and related systems within the county. If, if the motion is approved, I think it'd be worth really analyzing and seeing how it would affect the city. But as, you know, a, a political item strictly within the control of the five supervisors, you know, other than individuals weighing in, that's their political matter. So we'll monitor it and we'll bring back, you know, first to the council, but then later to the public, what the effects that Temple City might see would be.
I'm wondering if we could just get like a standard response, maybe, Brian, that we can send to stating that, Greg, where we're on the same page so that we just don't ignore the, you know, concerns and just don't look at what the residents are asking us to do. Because they're saying, would you please, you know, take a stand in opposition of what they're doing? But if we have a standard response, then I think it shows that the city is at least engaged in looking at, at it.
We'll do it.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else, Mr. Cook?
No, sir, Mayor Mann. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we'll go to our city attorney, update from our, Mr. Greg Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I know that the council has really enjoyed having an additional item under almost every recommendation regarding SEQA exemptions. And so you'll be disappointed to hear that the California Supreme Court de-published the G.I. Industries versus City of Thousand Oaks case, in which the appellate court said that we had to include that SEQA exemption or SEQA non-project statement on the agenda itself and in every motion. In light of that, your agendas beginning two weeks from now will be a little less heavy. They won't have that extra paragraph. The City of Thousand Oaks is still bound by the opinion. The Supreme Court didn't vacate it. Thousand Oaks, with respect to the contract in question, still needs to go back and take the actions, corrective actions. And I, we don't really know why the Supreme Court wanted Thousand Oaks to do that, but, but they didn't get rid of the opinion altogether. They just simply said that the rest of the cities in the state don't need to follow it. So we're quite happy about that. I know the city clerk is probably happiest of all. But while the Mayor Protem did a great job of reading that long paragraph on Item AB tonight, he won't have to do it anymore. So.
I know, I saw that. I go, man, where does that come from?
That is my report. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Yes, we are sorely disappointed to cut down on, on our motions. Thank you. All right. Next is council reports on ad hoc or standing committee meetings. Do we have any?
No.
Okay. All right. Then we'll go on to council items separate from the regular agenda. Councilmember Sternquist?
Nothing. Just like to hopefully see a lot of people out there on Saturday and wish people a happy Easter, if you celebrate it.
Mayor Protem?
No, nothing. Same. I look forward to Saturday. That was always a, a nice event. And we haven't, and then we've, because COVID, of course, interrupted all of that, but we usually get a lot of people and I think it's going to be probably that and the east and the Halloween are the two probably largest attended events that we have at Live Oak Park in the city. So I'm looking forward to that. Good. And it's supposed to be nice weather too, for a change. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. And yeah, I'm, I'm looking forward to that as well. I was actually talking to my son Adrian and I said, hey, we have that Easter egg hunt at the park. I'm like, do you remember the last time you were there?
Couple of years ago.
And then the thing he told me was, he says, yeah, there were too many people.
Yeah.
But he, he said that in, in a way where, you know, because the kids, it's like one, two, three, go. And then the kids are out there and trying to get the eggs. And I think he didn't get as many as some other kids. So that's why he, he brings that up. But yeah, I too am looking forward to it and I'm glad that we're doing the outreach for the, the park ideas, the outreach for, for both Temple City Park and Live Oak Park. So I'm also looking forward to that. And yeah, the, I think we're getting a brief break from the rain, so let's all enjoy the, the time we have out there. Next, we'll go on to additional public comments. Not on the agenda? No, no takers? You stay till the end, you got to say something. Just kidding. All right, we'll close our public comments and we are adjourned. Good night.